Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, April 25, 2016, and tonight we have a series of three committee meetings. As a favor, if those people who are in the audience could just do a double check with their cellphones to make sure they're on mute or turned off, that will help us because it gets a little bit distracting sometimes. We'll lead off with the Planning and Development Committee, and that is chaired by Chris Fall.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm bringing forward changes to the wellhead protection ordinance that we passed many years ago, and keeping up with the times, we change it with the times. And would you like to come up and discuss our changes, since you're on the committee? Basically, it's changes to the agricultural definitions and administering and who is responsible for such changes.
Good evening, everybody. We did pass on your recommendations from our last meeting. I trust you all have a copy of the--
Can you just introduce yourself?
Sure. Mike Cooper. I'm with County Health Department, member of the source water protection team. If you look on that modified draft, you'll see the changes to language in red text there. And I would just, at this point, ask for your opinions on what we've come up with.
I know that there was some questions from the last time, from the last draft that came, and I'm wondering, the people who had questions and concerns, whether they have been addressed in this newest draft?
I guess you're referring to me. Yes. Paragraph eight, stormwater runoff and erosion control plans and structures. I'd say you did incorporate some of my concerns. But the property owner is accountable?
Sure, we did look at some other language, and this seemed to be consistent with other source water protection plans in the state.
Could you read that for the audience?
Sure. Our addition to paragraph eight is the property owner is responsible for all actions occurring on his/her property. In the event of a lease agreement, the property owner is equally accountable. Any violations are subject to the provisions of Title 39, Section 390108, Paragraph B. And in accordance with Section 390108, Paragraph B two, the property owner is responsible for all costs associated with cleanup and remedial expenditures required to restore a site to its condition as it existed before any violations. Councilman Reisner, does that address your concerns?
Yes, yes, it does. It's good to know who's responsible for something.
Yes, absolutely, and a good point brought up, and we're happy to put that into the Under paragraph five, we had a question regarding changes to the list of chemicals submitted in the application process, and we put the language in there. Are there any changes to the list to be employed? Do application frequencies have to be approved by the administering authority before implementation of any such changes? And finally, on the backside, we had a thought that 390108, which is the enforcement section of the ordinance, we needed to add a little language into Paragraph A four to include agricultural sites, and we also noted that fungicides were admitted from that list, so we wanted to make sure that that got in there as well.
Michelle, did you have a?
No, I was just going to refer back to Section five that you discussed, which was the important piece to get full accounting of the chemicals.
Yes, absolutely. So what we're looking for here is if somebody-- and we're not trying to discourage agricultural activities in the source water protection area, but we do want it done in a responsible manner that addresses concerns with leachability of any of the chemical compounds that be used, and also, you know, operational issues, again, with stormwater runoff and erosion. We had some concerns about that as well.
Chris?
And for my notes last time, I noticed that it was passed originally in 2005--
That's right.
--and then amended in 2009 and 2012, and so now here we are in 2016. Is the wellhead management protection group then periodically reviews this and takes a look at it and responds to queries from the public?
Exactly. And we encourage input from the public. We encourage the public to read Title 39 and be familiar with it, and we welcome any comments or recommendations. As we said before, it is a dynamic document. It changes all the time, and we do look at it on periodic phases to see if we're missing something here. We do meet, the source water protection team meets twice a month, second and fourth Fridays of the month, April through December. We go to once a month during the wintertime, when things are a lot slower, so we do encourage anyone to contact us and let us know what you're thinking.
Well, I'd just like to point out that this is extraordinarily important thing and a role that the city and City Council takes, because if we have source water that is not safe and clean, that kind of impacts everything else we do as a city. So I want to say thank you to all the people who work on, with you on this.
We work well as a team.
Yeah, and I appreciate this as a living document, and that it changes with the times. So thank you, thank you.
Just one more little edit to this. At the very beginning, it should be 39.01.07B--
Okay.
--instead of 30.
30. Did you get that? Oh, it's on ours.
Oh.
She has it. It's the most important person when she has--
I did mess that up. Sorry about that.
Any other questions? So I will bring this up on Monday. Thank you.
All is to be done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
I have one miscellaneous.
Yes. Back in February, when we were having snow, there was a lot of discussion about sidewalks and getting snow removed off the sidewalks in time, and we noted there was a problem, an issue with some residents who, for various reasons of being infirmed or aged or something, they couldn't get their sidewalks cleared within the appropriate time, and we were discussing different ideas about how we could deal with that. And I don't think we got much further than one evening of discussion, and the snow stopped, and now it's sunny and it's 80 degrees outside, which is the best time now to really start discussing, what are we going to do for the winter that's coming? What can be put in place, some policy or actions that the city could implement? As I suggested, in February, perhaps the city could remove the snow for those people who have been designated as unable to do it themselves and charge an appropriate fee, as if they were being hired out by a private contractor. That was one idea. I'm not, it's not carved in stone or anything. I'm willing to listen to anything, but I'd like to hear some ideas, how we can help some of the people that really do need our help. I mean, we're a community, and we really should help these people. I'm willing to work with anyone to get this moving.
And maybe, actually, this may be a better thing under City and Safety Services Committee, since it's not as much a planning and development or a committee of the whole. But I think that Jeff is right with looking at it now, so we develop some ideas, maybe some ideas, and then when students get back in, we can work with Barb Harris and do stuff. So I just, I think it's smart to think about it now when you're not really thinking about snow, as opposed to in the middle of a snowstorm. Chris?
I think that's a good idea, too. The orientation, I think, for university students begins soon, and so if we have information that Barb Harrison from Off Campus Living can assist us with, that would be great. The other problem that I remembered from last winter was when the city streets were plowed, that it was sometimes blocking driveways on businesses, particularly East State Street, the businesses and sidewalks along there, too. So might be something we want to look at also with how we time plowing the streets and alerting businesses when we're going to be doing that, so they don't get blocked up again, made pedestrian walking really hard.
We can certainly try to figure out something. You know, this is one of those big issues where, you know, we can try to time it out. We're talking snowstorms, and we're talking about, on the one hand, everyone wanting accessible streets, and then, on the other hand, sidewalks comes in, which are the responsibility of the property owners. But we can certainly explore some of this moving forward. I will say this, and this is related to another topic completely, but it has to do with street or sidewalk maintenances. When I went up and spoke to the director of the Special Improvement District of Lancaster, one of the things within their CID, which is part of their CID, their Special Improvement District, is snow removal within the prescribed area for those who are paying into the CID. That's not going to solve a citywide problem, but it's an interesting model to see with an overlay within a designated area for something like that.
No, I just want to have a brief comment, that I've been doing some research and looking into this as well, and have made a couple phone calls to some other communities. So with future planning, us discussing this at a future date, I can present that data in an organized manner. Some interesting ways of tackling this in other communities.
I would just say, in echoing the mayor, emergency vehicles have to be able to get where they're going, so that's one of the issues in terms of prioritizing, getting the roadways cleared. And I know, Member Butler, you've brought up Chardon, and I brought that up with the law director, but that's a charter city. So once again, we have these challenges, what is statutory and what is charter, but we're open to continuing the discussion.
I think for the public, just to explain what that difference is, in terms of a charter can just hire, can you explain what the difference is?
Basically, a statutory city is obligated to the higher-advised code statutes and the parameters therein. That requires the registered certified mail, and the processes are already there, and we're obligated to those.
And so sometimes what's been mentioned is that charter cities have a little bit more flexibility, they have a city manager, and so some of the programs that they implement might be easier. We do have, excuse me, possibly a meeting coming up this summer where we're looking at other university towns, and I know it seems like a really rudimentary kind of topic, but it might be one where some of those other towns that we're meeting with have some ideas.
It's a good idea.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
That's all I have for Thursday. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to City and Safety Services Committee, and Mr. Kent Butler is the chair.
Thank you, President Isley. First, we'll begin this evening with a presentation, which I will introduce Councilmember Jennifer Cochran to head us up in that direction.
Thank you, Member Butler. Many of you may recall that we've engaged in electric aggregation through SOPEC, or the Southeastern Ohio, Southern Ohio Public Energy Council, and as part of that, there was a proposed solar project, and that solar project has not yet moved forward to fruition, and so we have a couple guests here from Hecate Energy, Paul Turner, and Nolan Moser from Empower Gas and Electric, and they're going to provide us with an update on the proposed solar project in partnership with SOPEC. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. We very much appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. We've been working pretty diligently on this development proposal for over a year and a half with local landowners, local suppliers, utilities from the area, and we've made pretty significant progress since then. We wanted an opportunity to present directly to you about important project details, also updates, and give you the opportunity to start asking those important questions that you want answered before we move forward to our next steps. So thank you very much. With that, I'll let Paul Turner take it from here.
Hi, Paul Turner with Hecate Energy. As you'll see from the handout, I've thrown on some bullets that might provide some of the topics of interest, and so I can do, it's up to you, I can do a little background about Hecate, I can do a little background about the status of the project. Just tell me what you'd like me to start with, and given the time that you have.
I think we can jump right into the status of the project.
Okay. So this is a solar project. This is photovoltaic cells, so you'll see them mounted on rooftops. In this case, though, the project would be located in Albany, and it's a ground mount. Okay, so we basically take exactly the same type of technology, and you buy a field, or you bopsh in the land, and you mount these panels, you plant them at the southern sky, and in the case of the technology that we're specifying for the project, you'll hear it referred to as fixed tilt or as trackers, and this is a tracker system. The advantage of a tracker system is it actually follows the sun across the sky from the morning to the evening, and you're capturing more energy. We call that kilowatt-hours, energy is captured or measured as kilowatt-hours. So that's what we're specifying for this project. It's about 40 acres of land in Albany, so it's in the county. The land is under control, so there's really just two or three major items that you need to be aware of as a developer of a solar project. It's the land, so we have that under control, we have that under contract with the landowner. The environmental permitting has just begun on that project, and every project can be a little different depending on what the land use is, historical land use has been. And then the third part is what's called the interconnection. So we're connecting to the wires that run down the road, three-phase wires, they're AEP distribution wires, 12,000-volt wires, and that's what we're connecting to, to move the power essentially to Athens load, the city load, and the county, the buildings and so forth that the city and the county own. So all of that is in play. This is a project that currently, if we signed a contract tomorrow, we would probably be able to mobilize, get the construction started, and you would have a project energized, what we call commissioned, by the end of this year. Okay, so let's say that's about six to seven months. Everything, I'm building in some time, some contingency here, plenty of contingency time. So that's the timeline, once you hit the go button, is you could have something online in about five, six, seven months. So that's the status on the development side of the project. Like I said, I put some bullet points. I'm happy to talk about these, if any of those have a particular interest. One item that I know, on the second page, that I tried to summarize is to add a little clarity to the pricing. Okay, so it's not a simple matter in aggregation, especially when you're talking about solar power, which only produces when the sun is shining. Okay, in rough numbers, about 20% of the year, you're actually generating electricity. Okay, so you've got to take out the 16 hours of darkness, okay, and then you also have the location here, so we call that a capacity factor. So about 20% of the hours, it's actually generating, the bulk of that being in the summer. Okay, the bulk of that being between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. Okay, just because there's sun that comes up in the morning, it's not really generating a lot of electricity until the sun gets to a certain point in the sky. So in order to be able to have and keep the lights on as the sun is going down right here, you have to have another source of energy. We call that the brown power. Okay, brown, and then not trying to cast dispersions about it not being green, it's just industry references, non-green power is a brown power. So what does that mean? It comes from a dispatchable source, like natural gas or coal. Okay, so in this area, you have a lot of coal energy, and so that's what the reference is to the brown power. So about 60% of the supply, if you look at the column, I'm on the second page here, 60% of your day is generated by electricity coming from brown power. Okay, about 40% of your total supply is coming from the green energy or the solar project. Then in the third column, I add the two together, and these prices, these numbers that you see here are cents per kilowatt-hour. All right, now this is just the generation. This does not include moving the power, the cost of moving the power on the wires from where the solar project is located, okay, to your meter. Once it gets to your meter, the power has been delivered, the energy has been delivered. So these are all in cents per kilowatt-hour, and so I'm just going to focus for a few minutes on the first three columns, then we'll talk about the last column, which I labeled Ohio Power. Okay, so what I'm showing here is the main bulk here is, what's in yellow is the term of the contract that the city and the county would be signing with SOPEC. It's a three-year contract. At the end of the three years, you can sign a different contract, might be the same contract, you might renew this contract at different terms and conditions with, in this case, we're talking about AEP energy. So SOPEC selected Hecate to provide the solar power, okay, the green, and AEP energy to provide the brown, and AEP energy to move the power from the source to the meter. Okay, so when you add those numbers up, you get, and remember, this is weighted average. So when you look at the third column, AEP plus Hecate, 5.45, that's 60% of the 3.75, plus 40% of the 8, you add those two together, you get the 5.45. That's where that number comes from, in every single row, for all 10 years that I show, remembering that only three years are locked in. The inflator, which is the red numbers, and this is an important thing to, this is an important part of the whole discussion here, is we have a fixed-price inflator, 2% a year. So no matter what's happening out there in inflation, I know inflation's below 2% right now, but commodities go like this, we know that natural gas prices, gasoline prices, all see different types of volatility, and it's interesting to note that we hold it 2% every year, for the three years for sure, and even if you want to look out further, we would have a 2% fixed-price inflator for all those years. So we can, the main column that you want to focus on is the third column. That is your wholesale generation price. Doesn't get it delivered, there's another charge of about 1.24 cents per kilowatt-hour for AEP energy, who's got the contract with SOPEC, to move the power from the source to the meter. So I didn't add that here, the 1.24, because I'm trying to keep it focused on generation. Go to the last column. This reflects the numbers that Ohio Power discussed in a recent case, and I reference it down below, the PUCO case. So this is reflecting what, if you stay with the utility, this is what Ohio Power is predicting happens to wholesale generation prices for the utility. So that's the number you would compare to, that's a pure brown power number, okay? That's the utility number. And it's interesting to note, the inflators in red, what happens between the first year and the second year, so that's basically 16 and 17, and every year after that, these aren't my numbers, these are the consultant that testified in the PUCO case. Okay, so you can look the case up, there was a consultant, and these are the numbers that this individual put together and presented to the PUCO. So you can see that there's a significant jump in the first year, and then it sort of tappers down to four, negative one and one, and then, interesting, at the end of seven, I want to point out, and just go right to seven, again, you're only in for a three-year contract, you're getting a 20, 25, 30-year-lived project, but you're only having to commit to three years to buy the electricity. Then you can go back out and revisit and go and shop again for the best price. What happens in year seven, so I don't know if recently you've heard about the AEP trying to bring their stipulated agreement to bring their coal assets back into rates, okay? That lasts for seven years. At the end of the seven years, those assets are no longer protected and no longer being recovered through rates, the cost of which are being recovered through rates. So that's why you see another pop of 18%, reflecting something going back to market out there in the wholesale supply. Okay, so the point I'm trying to make, and trying to add some clarity to the pricing here, is between columns three and four, you focus on those wholesale numbers, you focus on the inflator. We offer fixed-price contracts, they're not subject to the volatility of the market. Natural gas is now driving our business, the natural gas pricing dominates, and it's what you see, the volatility, and a lot of this pricing that you see is based on what the future looks like for natural gas. So I'll stop there, and if there's any questions, and I hope I haven't confused the situation any more than it might have been. The other point I want to make in column two, that eight cent per kilowatt-hour price that Hecate is offering, coming out of the solar farm, we've monetized the REX, the renewable energy credits. So there's a market out there that you can sell, so let's say somebody has a building that they want to have LEED certified. They can go out and purchase REX from the open market and apply that to their building, and that helps with their LEED certification. There's lots of reasons why people buy REX. So what we were asked to do was to show you pricing absent the REX. It still reflects a multimillion-dollar capital investment in Athens County of a solar project. So it's just the fact that we were asked to monetize those REX and show you on an apples-and-apples basis, kilowatt-hours to kilowatt-hours. The last few slides in there are for your own benefit, a little bit about Hecate. We're very, we've had a lot of success with municipals across different municipal entities, City of Houston, we were awarded a contract recently, City of Palo Alto, City of Los Angeles, and so we're very enthused about the opportunity to be here in front of you folks here at Athens. So any questions that I can answer, please fire away.
Can you briefly address the ownership of the project and the financing? Because I think, you know, that's, this is a very new and unique model for southeast Ohio and something that's never been done before, so there are a lot of questions about, you know, how does this work as far as paying for this, you know, whether it's a PPA or how the financing works on this?
So SOPEC has the PPA, okay, with Hecate. Hecate owns the asset, the solar. I'm not going to talk about the brown, okay, let's just focus on the solar power plant. Hecate owns that asset. We have a three-year contract with what you referred to as the power purchase agreement, the PPA. That's with SOPEC. At the end of the three years, you can renew that, you can go, you can stay with that solar project, there will, there might be other solar projects that are starting to be built. It's not unusual, from the work, I spent a lot of time in California, and it's not unusual to watch the first solar project transform. It sends a signal to the market, and not that you're looking for this, and I don't even mean to imply this, but what's happening in Utah is data centers. So these huge data centers are coming into Utah because they generate a lot of solar power, a lot of sun in southern Utah. So on a smaller scale, Athens County can see certain types of industry be attracted. So this is the first one, there will be others that come along later. So in terms of the PPA, that would be with us, Hecate, who owns the asset. In terms of the financing, there's three primary ways these are financed, and I refer to it on the slide as the investment tax credit. So there's a federal investment tax credit of approximately 30% until 2019. Okay, so the end of last year, the federal government renewed the ITC, so that extended it into 2021, but it starts stepping down after 2019. So we get 30% of our financing from what they call tax equity investors. So there's companies out there that want to own those tax credits. It has no effect on the operation of the project, it has no effect on the ownership of the project, it's just a way for us to get capital to build the project. So there's three things. There's investment tax credit, that's that 30%. There's cash equity that we'll put in, that's about 10%, and the rest is debt that we'll borrow from a bank. So you add all that up, that gets to your 100% of your capital stack, and that's how we finance these projects to build them for a 20, 25-year term, but in this case, again, only a three-year commitment.
Thank you.
For those people who are hoping to go solar themselves, to local homes, would there be any problem with their doing so if the city adopts this partnership plan?
Yeah, this is purely, with-- Yeah, this is purely, with us and SOPEC and the city and the county, this is purely to power the municipal buildings and the county buildings. It would have no impact on if somebody wants to put solar on their rooftop and connect behind the meter, okay, and offset their bill to the utility, it would not preclude them from doing that at all.
Is there a reason why the residential is not included in it?
So, rooftop solar, rough numbers. Twice as expensive, okay? It's the cost of putting people up on the roof, tearing the shingles off, putting the solar panels on, putting the shingles back on. So, for a lot of people, in a place like California, where electricity prices are 15, 16, 17 cents a kilowatt hour for your house, it makes a lot of sense to put solar up there because you're actually reducing your bill. Here, with the cost of electricity that you pay as a resident, it's not as compelling. It has to be done maybe for more altruistic reasons. And so, a lot of people don't have that financial incentive to necessarily do a rooftop system when it's that much more expensive than a ground-mounted system.
So, this is to power the municipal buildings, and do we have an estimate, like, what we're paying now and as opposed to this 5.45? And I realize that's the generation-only rate, but what kind of savings the city might see?
Yeah, I don't know what your numbers are. I don't have your bills access, I didn't have access to your bills to what you're paying. SOPEC would have maybe had that, but I can't say for sure.
SOPEC does. And I believe it was recently renegotiated with the Mercantile accounts. That's all the 83 city buildings in the City of Athens as well as throughout the county. And if I'm not mistaken, it was 4.79 or something like that. It was substantial savings down under the existing contract with SOPEC.
I would just remind viewers as well that part of the idea of this portion of the electrical aggregation with SOPEC was not only to bring down costs of electric for our residents and for our city and our county, but also to get greener energy so that we wouldn't be getting 100% brown energy. And so, that's one of the reasons why we have pursued a solar piece in partnership with the newly-developed SOPEC. So, while it might not be the basement-bottom electricity prices, it does help us to get to that goal of more renewable energy as well.
So, have you found when you put in municipal systems like this in other places, do you then, are you able to put in systems that could be eventually ground-mounted for residential use? How does, do you see a mushrooming effect from that?
That's just starting. What you're referring to is, so everything in the solar business started in California.
Right.
High electricity prices and really good sun.
Right.
Now, these new models are starting to be seen in California, small systems, ability to do community solar, so you capture the savings of a large ground mount, but you can actually buy the electricity from a little slice of that big ground mount. So, you don't have to pay, worry about holes in your roof and leaking and so forth.
Right.
On a rooftop system.
Right.
So, a lot of these new models are starting to come in, and they're coming from California and they're coming from New York. So, I expect you'll start to see these types of, this type of interest continue to grow, and it just sort of gets people thinking, the juice is flowing. The other thing I wanted to make a comment, we're in the, just early stages of negotiating a property taxes with the county, okay? So, remember, I wish I had, I should have had these numbers with me, and I don't, I apologize. The amount of property taxes that that project will pay compared to the amount of property taxes that were being paid as ag land are multitudes higher, because this is a multimillion-dollar investment. So, if it happened, we tried to find a place in the City of Athens, and there's just not a nice big square 40-acre parcel that we could do our solar project on. Not unusual. Go try to do it in Los Angeles, and you'd even be more frustrated. So, that's where we, that's why we ended up in a place like Albany. But, at some point, you'll start to see fill-in, so you'll find a little corner lodge, you'll find something that even maybe the city has on the back of where they do their store of certain equipment. You'll start to see solar panels popping up and taking advantage of open space.
One other question. You mentioned there was an investment tax credit of 30%, cash equity 10%, financing 60%.
Bank debt.
Bank debt. So, your company takes on the debt in terms of bonds or?
Correct. It's either done through a municipal bond offering, or it's just like going and buying a mortgage, getting a mortgage for your house. So, the bank is called non-recourse project financing debt. And there's a lot of banks out there that are now doing this as they become more comfortable with the technology. So, this has been around now at a large scale for about 10 years. Started in California and Arizona, and so now the banks are comfortable that, and the equipment manufacturers warranty started at 20 years, they're 25. Our power purchase agreement with the City of Palo Alto is for 40 years. The City of Palo Alto, a pretty sharp group of people, and they agreed to go and extend the power purchase agreement, and it's a 40-year extension that they can add to the project.
You mentioned the status with looking at property taxes. What are the other next steps for SOPEC as far as moving this project along?
So, the next steps would be to have buy-in from both the city and the county. That's really our next step, is to get you folks comfortable with what we're talking about, come back again, sit down, get all the questions that we can answered for you. And at some point, there needs to be an agreement that we're going, you are going to enter into this three-year contract with SOPEC, and then we'll be the supplier of the green energy to SOPEC.
Member Butler?
Thank you. Does the city have much say or input in where the solar panels, the purchase of the solar panels, whether they're American-made or whether they're from overseas?
You can.
Okay.
And if you insist on American, the price goes up.
Okay.
I mean, I'm being blunt.
Sure, no, it's.
It's just, right, now, does it go up? It doesn't double.
Sure.
I mean, I'm not even claiming close to something like that, but it goes up a little bit.
Okay.
And remember, there's not a lot of module manufacturers even in the United States.
Okay?
You've got SolarCity, who's got a factory that's under construction up in Buffalo, New York. You've got a small Chinese firm, name escapes me, in Mississippi. You have SolarWorld up in Washington, but those are manufactured purely for rooftop applications, they're not for a ground-mount application. So, right now, we don't have a lot of U.S.-manufactured product. Now, you can go to a Finfil, okay? So, I need to mention, there is another product called Finfil, which isn't modules, it's just a different technology. Some of that is manufactured in the United States, but that's not what we spec in order to hit the price point that we wanted to hit.
It's not as effective, correct?
It's, it is a lower efficiency.
Sure.
So, you need more land to get the same number of kilowatt hours.
Thank you.
I noticed that you said this was the fifth-largest solar project in Ohio, or would be if it was built soon.
It looks like Mayor Patterson wants to add his comments.
I do, thank you. I had no idea that this was coming forward tonight, so this is interesting. That said, would this preclude, given that we're a large university community with a lot of smart people out there, would this preclude us from doing any behind-the-meter projects in the city?
You do, you mean the city? So, the only thing that I would, you'd have to do the analysis to make sure now you're not double generating. So, if you're buying under a three-year contract this electricity from this solar farm, and now you're also going to self-generate because you want to put some solar on top of, say, this roof, you might have excess generation. You might be paying more, you're paying for more than you actually need. But I haven't sat and looked at the, again, I haven't looked at your bills, I haven't looked at how many kilowatt hours as a city you're actually generating. So, that's something that you'd have to do in order to have a definitive answer.
I'm thinking like microhydro or some other little things that are going on out there in the world right now, aside from solar-generated. And there's a lot of new technologies rolling out that are highly efficient, and I'm thinking if, you know, university department X comes to me and says, "I'd like to try something," you know, that we're not going to be penalized for them.
If you're generating off of something that's in the watts or kilowatts, single kilowatt range, you're fine. I'm talking when you go to hundreds of kilowatts with a big rooftop system or a megawatt, now we might actually be running out of room for you to use all this electricity on your meters. But, for some smaller applications, micro, you'd be fine.
It's a three-year contract.
And we have a question from my neighbor.
Are you or a fellow by the name of David Willhout, by any chance?
I am. He's with our company.
I've known him since the third grade. If you could have anything on paper, numbers, I would like to see that.
Which kind of numbers?
Whatever you've been talking about.
Yeah, it's in the presentation.
Well, I don't have it. I don't have anything.
I have it, everyone I have now, I'm sorry.
I can share my copy afterwards. Alan?
News topic in the past 48 hours, and that is school funding. You somewhat alluded to this. Which of the five school districts in this county will this land be situated, and who therefore will receive the property taxes?
It's in, it's in the community of Albany.
Alexander School District.
I don't know the name of it, but I know it's in the community.
Right, Alexander.
I hope the council will consider that in their deliberations. They will sit into the sharing of geography of the city schools. We'll get a negotiation for shared taxes.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you for your presentation tonight. Thank you very much.
Moving on to our next item on the agenda this evening, we have a discussion about water meters. So, this is, this is delivered to us by the administration. So, the mayor's office and the director of public works is requesting us to consider $50,000 from the water maintenance capital money to conduct the purchase of replacement meters. The meters themselves range in price from $1,000 to $5,000 apiece, depending upon size and other needs. The administration would begin with targeting large water consumers, such as larger apartment complexes first. And I believe, and if I understand correctly too, in our conversations, that they've been collaborating with the university on this project as well, so that as new dormitories and new buildings are being brought up, or the old buildings are being torn down, they will be also replacing these water meters so that we're more efficient in determining and reading the actual water usage that's occurring. Am I correct in?
That's correct. Yeah, this is, as you mentioned, this came out of the fire hydrant soundings, you know, the leak detection that went on across the city. So, $50,000 to go towards replacing both large and small meters.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions or comments from council? President Isley?
So, it will make it more efficient, does it also, will they be computerized or capable of, I know we've moved to a water meter readers kind of system.
Yeah, the radio reads.
That's remote, rather than a person physically going to the meter itself.
Yeah. That's in the price for some of these. I mean, from $1,000 to $5,000 per meter, I think the less expensive ones are, may not be radio-read, but the larger ones are, the more expensive ones, I should say, are, will be radio-read meters. Again, this is also going to reduce our water loss across the city as well. That's the main point for this, is to try to mitigate as much water loss. Typically, municipality tries to target somewhere in the 10% range of water production loss through leaks and whatnot, and it's a large city. And so, this gets us moving in that direction.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cutsus.
Thank you. So, how many meters are we looking to purchase?
You know, that I don't know. $50,000.
I think 20 to 25.
20 to 25.
Okay. And just deemed on size of project, that's where they'll get installed? Or is it also where you detected the leaks due to the testing that you guys did?
It's a combination of both. It's also reaching out to OU and when there's new renovations, major renovations, and replacing aged meters, but also based on that leak detection that occurred at 2:30 in the morning months ago, going along and pinging off.
I remember it.
The meters, or not the meters, pinging off the fire hydrants.
Okay. So, some of these meters will be just laying in wait for a project to come up? It's not like necessarily all of them are going to be employed at the?
I think he's got these identified for this year. I don't think this is to have, you know, rolling stock to where we can sit there and if something happens, maybe a couple. But, I don't, that's not the plan. The plan is, is these are the meters that we need out there to replace. When I say there might be a couple, it might be planning ahead with some major renovations at Ohio University. But again, that's a conversation that needs to work its way through further with OU.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you. The next item is just simply a little bit of day-to-day business, and that would be to retire from our use a Ford Expedition, which I believe is of 2002, which was used by the fire department, previously had been used by the chief, and we're pretty good at the city of getting as much as we can out of our vehicles before we move them on. It was then moved down to Station 2, and now with it having about 90,000 miles on it, we're hoping to donate it to the Nelsonville Fire Department, and that's a volunteer fire department. Any questions or comments on that? President Isley?
Are we replacing the Ford or just retiring this one and we already have sufficient vehicles?
We had built into capital this year for replacement for the Station 2 vehicle, so that's being outfitted now.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the fire truck vehicle? I believe that covers what's listed on the agenda miscellaneous or?
Just one question. Any word about the fire truck breakdown on Richland Avenue this afternoon?
Any more word on it?
Just what I read on Facebook. I'd like to get more from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, it appears to have been an electrical, it was a wiring harness in the truck itself that frayed and started smoking.
Okay, so, but it wasn't really a firefight, it was more?
It wasn't like an engine compartment fire or anything like that.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good news.
Which, I'm sorry, which vehicle?
Yeah, which vehicle?
It was number five, wasn't it?
I was told it was one of our old pumpers from Station 2.
Station 2.
I don't, haven't gotten the update yet.
Thank you. Does the mayor's office have anything for miscellaneous?
Nope.
Okay. I might just make a kind request in the next couple of weeks that we dig into pool updates just to keep us all abreast and informed. So, maybe in a couple of weeks, we'll tackle just general updates. Thank you.
We'll move on to Transportation Committee, and this is chaired by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Isley. First on the agenda is Boogie on the Bricks. I believe Judy Reimer is here this evening to update us to whatever conversations have occurred. We still haven't locked in on, we've locked in pretty much on the date.
The date.
That is locked in, but we do not have the location locked in.
Right. And I think that Boogie on the Bricks continues to move forward with our preference where we, you know, since we have expanded to two blocks, we would prefer to stay from West Union to State. However... However, we are amenable to whatever is necessary to move forward because we would like to continue.
Right.
For planning purposes.
So Judy, I've, I've heard some feedback from, from different folks, and, and I guess it really kind of goes to the expansion of the need for the two blocks and whether we really need the two blocks. And I don't know if any other council members have comments on that. I know that, that one block doesn't see a lot of action except at the very end where you have that stage. And I assume that, I mean, have you considered just having one stage?
I have, well, I've considered one stage, and we could move forward with, with one stage. I'm not opposed to that.
My point is that if it, you know, when you have an event, if it's spread out, it just doesn't seem like the event is, as attractive as it would be if it was all kind of pushed together in one block. And then those businesses on that end are, you know, all day because we're closing at 6:00 AM. I mean, they basically.
I suppose what I've seen over the years where we have expanded, we have seen on a beautiful, like, most.
Perfect day?
Perfect day. We've seen up to 6,000 people. And to imagine that many people on one block, I, I can't imagine. I mean, it would also be a city, you know, transportation consideration as well. But I cannot personally imagine that many people in one block.
Okay.
Because on our best day, if, if we have that many people, but with, speaking with other individuals that have been involved in the, you know, from the beginnings of this event, they, it's possible, I suppose. So we could, we could.
How many years has this been running now?
This is our 12th year.
12th year? Okay. Anybody on council have additional questions or comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, council member. Just want to acknowledge that we were in receipt of some letters regarding this, and one of which was from a business owner, just expressing support for how you have been doing it in the past with the stage location. I know that, I mentioned in the past that the AUBA Uptown Business Association had been curious about the stage placement, wondering if it would be beneficial or better somewhere else. But I do know and I'm aware that AUBA doesn't represent every Uptown Business Association, so, or every business, rather. So there is some challenges there trying to figure out what works, obviously, and it's for you to decide. But I wanted you to know and let, inform the public as well as other council members that we have received statements or support for leaving it as is rather than moving it so for both sides.
And you do advertise as a family-friendly event. And I think when we, we shift up the street towards the north, just because of the location of the different businesses at that end, I don't know if that changes the, you know, the feel for it. So I, I don't know. That's a community kind of thing.
It's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Interrupt. You know, I, I walked the street today, and I've discussed it with the, the stage and sound company that we have traditionally used, which helps us, you know, being a free event and a nonprofit organization, we have to continue to utilize the, the businesses and the vendors that work with us that allow us to continue to, to keep it sustainable. And I, I know that it is a concern with moving blocks because the, the city has, with, with electric involved, and they, you know, placed electric power, like, I'm not, I'm so shocked, sorry, but where they, they place the, the electric accessibility has determined on, you know, where they can place the stages. So that, that kind of is a determining factor as far as where we place the stages, as well as I know that our particular vendor with the stage is not, he's not comfortable with placing it on Carpenter, so we would place it down maybe closer to that kind of alleyway. And I don't really know if electricity would allow for.
Sure.
The stage, as well as making it financially effective for us. So there's that in mind that.
I'd like to hear from administration, your feelings.
Well, I would like to share that we were, when you first presented, I felt that you, council was directing to go to AUBA, which is exactly what we did. And at that meeting outlined the request. There are a number of, a few business owners here tonight that may want to speak to that. I know that we've saw the drop, as we did for Brew at least, but I don't know the distance, but I can find that out. And I think you'll hear them talk. They talked about drinking, non-drinking, and separating Court Street that way between the two blocks if they close. It'd be great if it could be in one block, but I have to agree that, you know, the number of people, I think, really may need to expand it. Similar to what you saw on International Street Fair, we had to close that entire block of Washington, hardly was any was used because the intersection was closed. So those are some of our many challenges.
So one of the conversations is to have a stage at Fern Alley for lack of a, and the electricity already exists there because isn't there something there at Halloween?
Well, there's something there for Brew.
In Brew Week. But, okay, I thought Halloween had something down there, too.
We moved it down, and we moved it even further down because it kind of became a congested area, actually, for someone, it was pretty much.
And so you would suggest that would be the stage that, that would normally be at State and Court?
And what level of detail?
Well, when you have two stages, I think you need, I mean, don't you need a distance?
Well, we need more distance. In order to have two stages, we would need more distance because otherwise you would have too much bleed with the sound. One block would basically, unless we're completely altering sets, it would completely drown out the other stage.
Right.
So as far as, if, if we were going to do two stages, we would need two blocks. Two blocks allow two stages, two stages and more distance allows potentially more people to be able to come and, you know, enjoy the festival. And, and the other thing about our, about Boogie on the Bricks and its design is because it is a free event and because we rely so solely on the people that are within the beer garden area to, to actually fund the event, that's kind of what, what we, what we rely on is people that attend the event within the beer garden area.
I think there's some members from AUBA, as you had requested us to engage with AUBA, so I don't know if any of AUBA business members want to speak or not.
Come on up to them.
If you'd be kind enough, thank you. President Isley?
Thank you, David.
And while he's coming up, just one question. When do we need to come to some kind of resolution? Do we need to come to this tonight so that we can move legislation forward next week?
We can close a street, and I think that that's what we're seeking from city council. You close a street, are we closing it from Union to State or Washington to Carpenter? And the logistics come from operation.
We can figure that out from there.
Thank, thank you.
Hi, I'm David Cornwell. I own J-Bar and Courtside Pizza. I basically have questions. Could you fire a stage out of stage if there's a two-block distance between the two? So because you have one at Carpenter firing, I guess it'd be south.
Towards.
And then one at, at, what do you, Washington and?
Washington.
Yeah, Court.
It's absolutely possible. I think that the reason that we prefer it to be on the other blocks is because like the most level.
Sure.
That we have of Court Street is from Union to Washington. So for vendor purposes, because we have a lot of vendors that also provide a lot of revenue for us, art and merchandise, food vendors, they provide a lot of revenue. And it is most level, the most level space that we have from Union to Washington. It's not, it's not unreasonable, it's not like impossible for us to.
I know one of the issues is an air, fear from the overhang. And I have Courtside, and obviously the stage for years, several years has been right outside our door at J-Bar.
Yeah.
But that stage, when, when, I know that there's a business owner that's not here that would like to speak, but I'll speak for him. But when the stage is, is on West State and Court, and the back of the stage is obviously down, you know, faces down North Court, those businesses down there feel like, okay, we participate in Boogie on the Bricks, and we, we want to do everything we can do. But when the stage back is to us, it's kind of, we're not included in the event, is the feeling.
No, I, I understand completely that you want to be more included, and I think that as, as we can all kind of work together and, and make the event actually maybe more sustainable if we're all working together, then I, I feel that we could make that happen.
Sure.
So the only thing I would say is somebody down at the other end or South Court may have the same feeling, like, if we're not, if we're not, you know, if the stage isn't down there, or that's the block that has the traffic for the, for the day.
That's why I think two stages, two stages, one here and one here on the two-block part.
But I don't know, I mean, as, as traditionally.
It's been at Union.
With the, with the, the street closures, I don't necessarily think that they're going to close off Carpenter for us to have a stage. I haven't actually been to.
Oh, it's on Court. Carpenter's open.
Carpenter stays open. Didn't it happen one year, two years? I think the stage was on Court.
Not for Boogie on the Bricks.
No.
No.
So Halloween? It's been stopping.
Yeah, it was Halloween.
So it works. So they kept Carpenter open, there was a stage on.
And I, I completely understand that, but as far as the autonomy of the event, I would, you know, like to see us be able to kind of logistically work out.
Right.
The, how the event actually, I, I feel, if we put the stage up on Carpenter, then the main stage on Carpenter, I feel as though that would kind of take away from the event itself, which, you know, I, I could see the state, again, like, I, I would agree with maybe closing that block, but I, I wouldn't necessarily feel as though we would want to put the stage up on Carpenter.
I don't know administratively that we want to close three blocks of Court Street. I don't see that happen. So it's got to be the two at the.
Josh Thomas.
The middle, the middle block is going to close, for sure.
I think the main thing here for everyone is, is arguments to be made so that council can make a decision as to whether it's one end of Court Street or the other end, and it's two blocks or less, but whatever it becomes. I mean, that's where this should be going.
All right, I'll jump in. Josh Thomas, Simon Brennans, down the street. Same thing, I'm kind of saying, from my block's perspective, and I talked to College Bookstore and some of the people on my block, we feel like the event is kind of nothing on our end. There's hardly anybody ever down there. Nobody, again, what I've expressed at AUBA is, when we do things in Athens, we have certain events, drinking events and maybe non-drinking events. This past weekend, we had the International Street Fair, that's a great non-drinking event. It's a perfect event for my block, you know, and on down. When we do drinking events, which Boogie on the Bricks is a drinking event, you just said yourself, we're relying on people to come there and drink, that's what we want them to do. Those events go really well. When you go from Washington.
That's the music.
Down, you know, if you go Washington all the way down to Carpenter, that's where people want to be. When you look at the Boogie on the Bricks crowd, I stand there on Saturday at Boogie on the Bricks, and I'm wondering why my block is closed every year, because there's really just never anybody down there. Especially, you might have one music act that people want to hear, but for the most part, when I've walked out there, there are a few, when the stage is done, there's a dozen people watching that music block. Everybody else is at the other end of the street because that's where they want to be. Especially if the music stops for a minute, we can go into the bar, we can have another beer, we can grab something to eat, we can do all that down on that end. We get, our block gets no business from Boogie on the Bricks. I mean, people just are not wanting to come to our block on that, they want to be down in the bar. So I understand the two-block system. I see it happen every year when we do the Last Call event. You know, when Brew Week comes in, we do Last Call, they put the stage right down there in front of Courtside, right in that area. It seems to work pretty well.
So in response to that, I, you know, as I continue to try, I, I see that there is a consistent increase in numbers that we get for Boogie on the Bricks, and so I'm trying to kind of like expand that. And yes, I recognize that there aren't necessarily as many people that are on that block. However, there are some, and as I continue to kind of draw people towards that, but on that side of the street, on that block, I tend to put a lot of the vendors, a lot of the art and merchandise vendors. And so with those, you know, 10 by 10 tents that they're setting up, it is more level space, and so logistically it, it allows for them to set up so that their stuff isn't like getting knocked over, you know, just looking at the street. And, and it's not as much of an incline as I originally was thinking. I think that it would, would work, but as far as kind of expanding the blocks, I, I do feel that we do need more, more than one block in order to, to, you know, cater to the, the merchandise vendors. And, and I recognize also that businesses, this, this is something that we have, that I personally have, have been wondering, how can we incorporate more uptown businesses? And, I mean, even to the, it's a silly idea, but maybe not so silly, but even to the idea of like a scavenger hunt or something inside businesses, but how can we incorporate more of the uptown businesses into Boogie on the Bricks? Because with the, the beer garden, it does kind of, sorry.
So that seems to be.
Yes.
A bigger conversation that you guys can have. We, we do need to make a decision.
Because in order for it to happen.
We have to make a decision.
I guess the opinion, I felt like at the AUBA meeting, I'm out of line, tell me, but I think the opinion was at the AUBA meeting, you need two blocks, we get that. You want two blocks, we get that. Washington to Carpenter are a perfect two blocks for it. Again, you're taking an event, and you're kind of cutting Court Street right in the middle, so now we have a wasted block on this end and we can't have any traffic on this end by having it in the middle. Put it on, put it down there, everybody's happy down that end, we still have traffic on our end, cars can still flow, they can go up into Washington Street. It makes the city a little bit more accessible for you to get up to Boogie on the Bricks and, and come up that way. Again, I just, my experience, just when I watched the Last Call, then I feel like that's the way to do it. I, I feel like your event would be much more successful if you were down on that end.
I think we're pretty successful.
Well, no, I, I think you'd do well, but like I said, I think people would enjoy it.
All right, we get. We'll take a timeout here.
So if I'm hearing right, administration says they'll work with the businesses and the conversation, what needs to happen administratively. They'll come back to us next week with a recommendation and?
I would just, I believe the previous recommendation stands from our meeting with AUBA, that was the Washington to Carpenter.
That was not communicated to me. So what is the recommendation? Washington to Carpenter.
And there was also some discussion, failed to include that, keeping Washington open, it does assist emergency vehicle, vehicle traffic in terms of.
So it would be south of that.
This, this intersection would not be closed.
Right, okay, right.
Yeah, even fire access through that whole area, there's a lot of arterials that come off of that, which are easily, more easily managed further north on Court Street as opposed to further south.
Okay. All right, so we're going to bring the information, we'll bring the ordinance forward and Monday.
Okay.
Thank you. Your turn. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the West Union Street. For all practical purposes, the terminology I'm using is an enhanced pedestrian way. So that's the terminology, just so we have an understanding there. So first off, those on council, we have the traffic, West Union Traffic Studies, Turning Studies, and that kind of thing. So I would like those to be brought up first so we have some reference points, because I did ask for that at the last committee meeting. And I do also believe that we have people in the audience who would like to speak. So I'd like to get that information forward so that we can, we can discuss that. So we have it on our laptops. Do you, I didn't know if it was going to be put up on the.
That would be nice.
Okay, on the monitor.
Scott, where are you?
But we could start discussing.
Sure.
Until.
Yeah, we, city engineer Andy Stone asked his department to start the traffic council. Yeah, we, city engineer Andy Stone asked his department to start the traffic council, they took traffic counts through that area, 11th of April, all the way on through, if I'm not mistaken, the 24th. There is a caveat I do need to throw in there, is that one of the days of record is Saturday the 16th, there's a lot of traffic closure in that area, so you have some unusually small traffic flow through that particular region because of the International Street Fest. But what came about was the average count of about 4,249 average day counts totals through that particular stretch from Congress, North Congress out to Court Street. Also looked at the eight-vehicle-per-minute peak in terms of the flow rate through this area. One of the things that city engineers said could be done is make some adjustments to the signal timing through that particular stretch, that would certainly alleviate some things, traffic flow through that stretch of road. Something else too, to share with you, because I was sitting there trying to get my head wrapped around 4,200 and some odd, what does that mean in the grand scheme of things? Some of the other numbers that are worth noting across the city, Richland Avenue, 16, or 15,000, average 15,000 on any given count. East State Street, 26,000 to 28,000. Columbus Road is about the equivalent of this stretch through West Union, about 4,500. 7,000 from West Union, at the, at West Union, but it's West Union and Schaefer, and essentially kind of going out of town through there, because it's picking up a lot of OU traffic flowing through there. And then 7,000, about the same for Stimson Avenue. So, in terms of streets of this caliber, this is on the lower end of traffic counts through this particular region.
I was just noting here that 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, 240, 286, and so this is turn, this is just whatever's passing in that block, that's what you're, so we don't have a count of maybe, okay, what's coming up West Union and turning onto Richland, we didn't look at any of that, or coming off of South Congress, obviously would have to come from those directions.
Well, they were doing some counts, he had a number of student interns out there doing physical counts
Okay.
Down there as well.
Okay.
I mean, we only, the city only has one traffic counter with tubes that you put down the ground.
Right.
He put right there, across from BW3s, I believe is where he mounted that, capturing everything coming on to, but he had, he had individuals standing at the corner of North Congress and West Union, counting flow coming down, in particular, counting the traffic per minute that is flowing around that corner, and taking that left-hand turn onto West Union, as he did with individuals standing in front of Henning and counting the traffic that was coming up West Union and crossing over and continuing, you know, in the eastbound direction.
I noticed the peaks are 11 to 1, and 5-ish to 6 or so is where you have the highest amounts.
Yeah, he thought maybe it wasn't a good idea to keep students standing there all day long.
At lunchtime, or whenever. And so the other comment too was about the signal, so can you share with us what the idea would be for the signal changes?
It's currently with, you know, from, with green and yellow, we're talking 19 seconds for the West, for the Union Street movement through here, and as you see in your handouts, you know, as he's looking at this with some tweaking, you know, we can look at an eight-vehicle queue that should clear within one cycle of getting these things through, but he's, you know, he can sit there and, and do some modeling with changing the timing to see what impact there would be by tweaking what the signal, the signal timing is.
Because you have to tweak the Court and Union light, and you have to tweak the South Congress and West Union coming up the hill.
As well as North Congress, where the North Congress light is, I mean, tweaking all of them to some degree to make flow travel through there, much like he does elsewhere in the city, where he makes adjustments based on
You have those special pedestrian crossings there as well, where nobody's moving while the pedestrians cross, because it is pretty heavy pedestrian in there.
He actually indicated, you couldn't, you know, request a better study, to study what is going to occur in the future as it is now, almost. I mean, there's not usually that opportunity when we go to an impact study. We're looking at current and then future, whereas essentially, this closure is close to what is proposed in terms of traffic and vehicular movement, and so.
Okay. Anybody on council have questions about these numbers or these ideas? No thoughts?
We have received some communication from businesses uptown about the possible loss of parking spaces, and is there a possibility for, if some of them would no longer be there, which I'm assuming it would, how many, how many of those, and is there a possibility for us remediating in some other up, close-in uptown areas, so that, you know, the businesses affected wouldn't feel such a loss?
There is, and that has been thought through quite a bit. There's currently 12 parking spaces on the north side of West Union between Congress and Court, 12. This would remove six, maybe seven of those parking spaces, the others would remain, so roughly a little more than half of those parking spaces coming off. Ohio Revised Code speaks to a parking space being seven-foot wide by 18 feet long minimum. All throughout, well, I shouldn't say all throughout the city, you know, large part of the uptown area, those parking spaces are 23 feet long. For anyone walking down Court Street, maybe you'll notice this the next time, you'll see a lot of, I don't even want to say smaller cars, you'll see SUVs sitting there and a good six-foot of parking space behind them, because ours are 22 to 23 feet long. So one of the things we can do is go park mobile with a kiosk on the south side of the street in this stretch, remove the markings and, and shrink these down to 18-foot-long spaces along this stretch, or maybe do a mix of some, if you want some longer ones, we could do that. But we would gain two parking spaces by shrinking the south side parking spaces from, from 23 feet down to 18 feet along that stretch alone. Could we do that other places on Court Street? I think so. I think another model that's out there under, that, with ODOT, is looking at compact parking spaces, which is a parking space that's 15 feet long. Again, specific to compact vehicles, which are usually more energy efficient and environmentally friendly, but that's a whole different conversation. So there are things that can be done in terms of recapturing lost parking spaces.
I would just add to that, parking with the new developments that are going in there, the rebuild, most of those buildings were given more occupants. So, not that they had parking because they were grandfathered in, but my point is, it is going to become an even denser area in terms of the amount of people living there, not the businesses, they will remain as businesses, but there will be even a denser population of people for loading, unloading, whatever. So that's just another thing to, to keep in mind. I'd like to bring up some of the people that are here, I think they've been waiting a while to, to spend their time. Who would like to come up first?
I'll come up.
Okay.
Counsel?
Mayor? I'm Erica, I'm co-owner of Hoffa's Records in the Union on the block of Union Street. I have worked on that block of Union Street from five to seven days a week since 1991, both day and night. I'm intimately familiar with that street, and I'm 100% opposed to the, what I call the green space, whatever the term we are using now to describe it. The first thing I want to address is this traffic study. I hear comparisons to other streets, comparisons to State Street, comparisons to Carpenter, comparisons to this. State Street is a four-lane street with a turning lane in the middle. The other block of Union is a two-lane street, traffic both ways. You would expect to have more traffic. Right now, we're down to one lane, and we have five businesses. Jackie O's Public House, which has been running sort of on a skeleton crew, not serving food, kitchen not open, that's getting ready to reopen. We have the Union, us, we have what the bank going in, and what I believe to be two bars slash restaurants going in there. Before we had, I believe, 30-something apartments above those buildings, now it's 50-something apartments. I can tell you, being on that street every day, there's never a loading zone that is empty, ever. At 2:00, when they stop being for commercial loading zones, they will be filled with cars by 10 till 2. Loading is a serious, serious concern for us. The project, as it's laid out right now, will be definitely detrimental to the Union itself. We have, you know, obviously everybody knows, we've been closed for 18 months. I believe more people know now that, you know, the Union has been sort of a pillar of the music scene in Athens for the last 50-plus years. We have made a serious financial investment into the current stage, sound system upstairs in order to bring more national acts to Athens. If we lose the parking in front of the Union, it will throw a serious monkey wrench in us trying to get those national acts. If you see anytime that mod has an event or a show, you'll see on university terrace, you'll see semis, buses, all of the stuff with bag meters parked next to their venue. And we need to have that ability still, to when we bring national acts, to be able to go to the city, get metered bags, put them on the meters, to be able to park in front. Now, I'd encourage council to not take my word for this, how it would hurt us, but to talk to Scott Winlin or Tim Peacock, people who have been putting on things for a long time here, and, you know, get, let them, I believe they will express exactly what I'm expressing to you right now. I, I think there's a misnomer to say that if we're against this, if you're against this project, that you're somehow against green spaces or the improvement about town, and that's far from the case. I think there's much better places to put a community green space. Right off the top of my head, right out here on the block of Washington, between Chase Bank and the church, where before, you know, with, until you get to the parking garage entrance, no businesses there, loading zone still on both sides of Court Street, and you could make that whole half a block a beautiful green space that everybody could use all the time if they wanted to. At the very least, I would encourage council to wait until five new businesses open up, 50 new student housing units open up, and then do the traffic study. Because to do a traffic study now, when half the, pretty, essentially, all, two-thirds of the businesses on that side of the street are closed, and 50 bedrooms of students who have their friends drop them off, take their car to the grocery store, drop their groceries off, all of that kind of stuff, let alone the issues that come, in my mind, with having only one lane. All the time, you'll see fire trucks parked in front of Bromley Hall. When the fire alarm gets pulled, fire truck has to come, stops in front of Bromley. You'll see it across from the metal diner, where the, that building of student rentals. Those fire alarms get pulled all the time, fire truck comes, has to park in front of there, traffic moves right around. Well, if we have one lane on Union Street, and I promise you, those fire alarms in, when you have 50 student rentals in this space, they're going to get pulled multiple times a quarter. Now, I'm sure you could talk to Chief Reimer and find out how often they are sent out on false alarms, but in my mind, if that happens, that street is immediately closed for as long as fire has to be there. My next concern is, as a bar owner, very frequently, we have to call a cab for patrons who have had too much to drink, or what is even more common is young patrons who are on mood enhancers like Xanax or something else, where at two drinks, you're perfectly normal, and at three drinks, you're falling down. How does a cab stop to get somebody into the cab when we have one lane? So anyway, if you have any questions?
Thank you. Anybody on council have any questions for?
You know, I've talked to a few people on council, and if anybody would like to get a cup of coffee or an adult beverage at some point, I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you about, you know, about this, but
We'd have to pay for it.
Well, you can buy it for me, you know what I mean? I've been out of a job for 18 months, so.
I really appreciate you coming tonight, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We know where to find you.
Yes, indeed.
Anyone else? Alan? I know we usually stick to a three-minute, but I know this is a very important conversation, so Alan, just try to keep it
I will, if this comes on.
If it comes on.
Don't hold your breath.
Scott. They said come early and get set up, and we did, and
Yeah.
Out there.
Scott.
No, that's the other.
There. Thank you, Scott, for the presentation.
We may have let it go to sleep too long. Snooze.
Guard director.
So solar guys did it?
Mm-hmm.
It's night. Beautiful, okay, good deal. Yeah. My name's Alan Swank, I live at Forty Townsend Place, been in Athens since 1979. I'm currently Regional Vice President for Bowe Four Year Books and cover a territory from Maine to North Carolina. And I share that last bit with you on purpose. Traveling as much as I do and seeing as many different cities as I do, it's kind of a double-edged sword. As I found out last year when I ran with Pete and Jennifer for City Council, sometimes people want to hear about other places, and sometimes they just don't want to hear what you have to say. Because often, the interpretation is, what you're sharing with them from someplace else is better than what we have here. That certainly wasn't my case in the council election, that certainly isn't my case today. But when I do see these places, and I've talked with quite a few council members, I've talked with the mayor, I've talked with Paula, when I do see these places, sometimes it's okay to borrow steel and bring back the best, modify it to fit our situation here, and then see what happens. Last year, when the tragic fire on Union Street took place, sitting around my kitchen table with my wife, February, early March, we got to talking about what possibly could happen there. Happened to be one of those days when it was very nice, nice enough that you could go eat outside. And Terry said to me, oh, it sure would be nice if there were some places in this town where we could go and dine outside. Yes, I can go down to David's out back, have a great pizza, I can go to Brony's, and the new Thai place down on Union Street. Other than a few tables like out in front of Josh's place, there really aren't any designated outside, shall we say, dining places. I could go to the OUN, but that's about it. Well, one of the places that we love to visit is Burlington, Vermont. This is a 360 of Burlington, as you can see, and this is kind of neat, as we go around here, they're all, we don't want to, we'll make everybody sick here. As, as you've noticed, there are all kinds of outdoor spaces in front of businesses. This is on Church Street. What they did in Burlington was, rather than putting these businesses, extending out from the business, they put them out in the middle. So you have the pedestrian sidewalk here, and then these places are out here. All kinds of places to dine, to get a sandwich, sit down, get a beer, have, you know, one of Josh's subs, a salad, whatever, whatever the case may be. This is a totally blocked-off street. I think for council or anybody to say, let's block Court Street off from end to end and try this, would be a great mistake. But I do think if we start small, with one block of Union Street, as it is currently configured, might be a good place to do an experiment. Now, we keep hearing all these terms, pedestrian space, I saw a new one today, I kind of liked Patterson's Plaza, I was in the A news, somebody called it. Just kidding, Mayor. But I, I think what we've seen is a great drawing, and people are unlikely to think, if we do this, this is what we're going to do. And my
In my mind, what we should do, what we might do, falls somewhere in between, a combination of green space, sitting space, dining space, and all of that. What's neat about this though, I'm sure, that's City Hall, by the way, in Burlington. What's neat about this, when you, when the sun goes down, look how the complexion, it's a little different to mine, look how the complexion of this street changes. And as a gentleman from the Union said here, "This street is lined with clubs and bars that bring in national acts."
Problem is, it's illegal in the state of Ohio to do it.
Excuse me. Appreciate that, excuse me. It's lined with that. But look at the people, look at the economic development, look at the opportunity to bring people into the city. And again, I think an experiment on, on Union Street might be the best. Now, let's say, in all due respect, this is a total failure. If we're not putting in permanent installations, it's very easy to pull it out and return it to what it is. Right now, on the sidewalk, you have thirteen point three feet of space. If we go from the curb to the middle where it's blocked out, you have an additional twenty feet, eight inches. So you have a total of almost forty-four feet of usable space there to maintain a legal sidewalk and also entertainment dining areas. Talked to Pete Saturday, talked to bike race, and we got to talking about transportation and cars and all that. Somewhere along the line, we're going to have to get away from this fallacy, but because we have a car, we have to use it. And because we use it, we have to park right in front of the business we want to go to. Something like this may encourage, we're not sure, but it may encourage people to use alternate transportation, we're expanding our bus system as I speak, we're expanding bike lanes, we've expanded places to safely store your bike. I went out and bought a smart car, so Steve, as far as I'm concerned, you can take those parking spots down to twelve feet, all in place to park. But I think we need to look what we can possibly do. One other thing, real quickly, to, to address, concern for time here, Asheville, North Carolina. Now, Asheville's taking a little different approach, and this is the Vance Mine, you went on the Big Square downtown Asheville, that's not supposed to happen, is you look at these places, they actually extend it from the business on both sides here, all the way down the street. This is the dining capital of southeast. If you can't find a good meal here, you don't like to eat. So you have the extension right from the business, and then they maintain paying the sidewalks out along the outside. I like the drawing that Art did, I think that's a starting point. And I think council, if you consider that as a starting point, rather than a concrete recommendation, I think we could probably come up with something that would be a good place to start, to see what we want Athens to look like in two years, four years, or ten years. I would encourage you to explore options with us. And in terms of the parking and the traffic study, you know a fellow by the name of Bruce Dazell. I'd encourage you to listen to his song, "The Parade," from nineteen ninety-eight, and what it talks about are the people who continually circle the uptown area, particularly on Saturdays. And when Bruce was a senior in high school in his big old car, he claimed they led the parade every Saturday night. Thank you.
Alan?
Yes, Mayor?
Any questions for Alan? Any comments?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody, let's have Josh.
Josh Thompson, back from Brennance. My concern with this project, to be blunt, I'm not for it, I spoke to the mayor about this, my issue that I would ask council is, who does this benefit? I like Alan's drawings, I like his pictures, what I see there is I see buildings that are already pushed back, I see space that's already there, it's already available. We don't have the space that's already there, we're having to create space. Alan, you're fed right into what I'm going to say. What does he want to do when he goes up to this new space we create? You want to dine, and you want to see entertainment, right?
Yes.
Who's going to provide that dining and that entertainment? Jacky O's. So we're going to spend two hundred thousand dollars, that's the quote, and we're going to create an outdoor patio for Jacky O's. Does that sound accurate?
No.
That hadn't been said.
We were just told there are two other businesses going in that might be restaurants, and I think...
Kitchen, maybe?
Nope, well, you're not.
No. Nothing, it wouldn't benefit you too, if you could have a musical act outside.
I would just like to say real quick on the subject, because where Burlington, Vermont, and Chapel Hill or Asheville may be different, within the state of Ohio, you cannot legally serve any liquor or beer on a patio without a fixed, permanent fence blocking it off. It's the reason why, down at, down at Cider House, they have four tables out front, they could not legally have those tables out there and have people sit at them with a drink outside, until they built the six-inch-tall, permanently affixed fence around that space. And that's why the first six months they were open, they haven't. Now, that is not, that is a state of Ohio, I mean, the state of Ohio was, has the most, some of the most backwards liquor laws in the United States, going back to prohibition, and that's not something I think city council can really address. But for Jacky O's, or for the Union, it would not serve, I mean, I guess Jacky O's, you could eat a pizza out there, but you cannot have a Jacky O's beer out on the sidewalk unless you permanently gave the sidewalk to the building and put a permanent fence there.
Thank you, Eric. Josh?
I guess my, my, my thing with that, I, we just talked about Boogie on the Bricks, twelve years ago, at a, at a table with Rick Wassman, with his Boogie on the Bricks idea, and the very first thing we said is, everybody told us, "We can't drink in Court Street, it's against the law, can't do it." We do it, we do it twelve years in a row, we do it for any event we want to. So what would, I mean, and I'm not saying that Art would have this idea, I'm not saying it would all be on him. Some community member might say, "Listen, we'd like to play outside in this new outside venue, we got this nice outdoor space, we'd like to play out there, it's beautiful." So how long does it take before we fence that supper in one night with our plastic fencing like we do in Court Street, and we're able to drink there? And we need to be honest with who we are, I, I've said this to a number of people, we are a drinking town, that's what we do. That's what Athens is, whether we want to admit it or not, we all enjoy to drink. We look down at the students for drinking, but on any given Friday night in the summer, where are we all going to be? We're going to find our way uptown, and if it's a beautiful night, and there's a new venue that we can go and hang out in, what are we going to want to do there? We're going to want to drink. The first time somebody strums up a guitar out there, we're going to say, "Let's go in and get a beer, come back out and listen to that guy playing guitar." And I, I'm sorry, I've been here twenty years, I just don't, I see this space as a wonderful idea, that maybe it's a nice space, but eventually, it turns into a patio. A patio, and again, I'm not picking on Jacky O's, it could be, David's place could be in that space, and I'd be here saying the exact same thing, that we're creating a patio, the city is spending city money to create a patio. We just talked about, we can't, we can't fix sidewalks, we can't, we can't clear sidewalks, because where do we find money to do that? But we're able to spend money on this project, which will eventually, in my opinion, become a beer garden. Not all the time, not on a random Saturday afternoon, but maybe a Sunday afternoon, when we want to have a Sunday fun day, just like they did down there, a wonderful event down there they did, did, did on, on Stimson, but maybe they're going to try that uptown. And I just have a hard time believing that anybody in this town is going to say, "No, you can't do that." That's what it'll end up being. And I've seen other bar owners in this town fight tooth and nail, I don't own a bar, I got nothing in that, but I've seen other bar owners in this town fight tooth and nail to have any type of outdoor space, had to go through ups and downs and everything else. I mean, I, I've said this to a few other people, and I'm going to say it right now, if John Wharton owned that space in the corner, we are not having this discussion, it's not coming up. And I, I appreciate that the mayor wants to do all those things in the city, I back you on that, we've talked about that, that there's so many other things, if we have two hundred thousand dollars spent, I think we can find so many other things that benefit the entire uptown area. Again, I'd love to have more outside dining, we are built as we are. If you had alleys back behind all of our buildings, man, we could do so much in the streets, because we could get to our parking, we could have deliveries from the back, we just don't have it. We are what we are. So again, I'm just asking, be honest with ourselves, what are we really going to do with this space in six months, a year, whatever time?
Thank you, Josh. Comments? Anyone else from the audience like to speak?
I had no intention of doing this. My name is Todd Spurging. Back in two thousand or seven or eight, I, and in cooperation with Les Cornwell, we conducted a two-day study. We steam cleaned, I can't remember how many thousands of square feet it was, we did a time study, a cost study, what it would take, I mean, the bubble gum off the streets. That was after years of people talking about doing everything. The first person that struck it down was John Wharton, went to business, downtown business administrator, business district group or whatever, didn't even fairly represent it. But what it's going to boil down to is, is you're going to move concrete out, block a lane of traffic, somebody's going to have to clean the bubble gum off the streets eventually, pick up the trash, it's going to extend past the eleven feet that the business owners are responsible for, so the city's going to have to assume some responsibility. We don't even clean the bubble gum off our streets for the past sixteen years that I've been here, we just can't seem to get it together and do it. Somebody's going to have to buy a pressure rusher, somebody's going to have to staff this, somebody with a command and control position is going to have to pull all these businesses together and bill them. You do not want fifty pressure rushers out on the street on any given Saturday morning, no more than we would want Mr. Patsy's idea when he first came into town, and he was suggesting, but his way of, in joke, was just give everybody a two-inch spat on that and scrape it off every day. Well, that doesn't get the stuff that's embedded. So you're going to have to have an SID, you're going to have to have community cooperation, and I would suggest, still have to study the traffic and everything to find accurate numbers, as opposed to when the burns, when reconstruction is going on, I would suggest plan this incrementally, and get your SID, and work on improving what we have before we take another bigger bite off the other. That's...
Thank you, Mr. Spurging. Anybody else in the audience? Safety Service Director, Mayor, any other comments you'd like to...
It's never been identified to be space prescribed solely to the businesses there. But the last time we were here, we had discussion about, do we make this family-friendly, do we have a smoke-free zone, how would that work? And we've had discussions internally about landscaping and responsibilities and what that would be, so. And it's interesting to say, Josh, you're here, at A U B A, Josh stated, not verbatim, but "I would love to have that space out front of my building," so, we're kind of to, you know...
Well, I, I would just say, as a council member, we have to hear from everybody, you know that, and it, it does seem to lend to some preference at a certain area, certain businesses. I mean, I can understand how somebody at the north end of Court Street would say, "Hey, why not down here by me?" So, I mean, I, I get that, that concern in terms of preferential treatment. Anyone else on council? Member Costas?
Just, just to expand on that, can, I mean, there's been other projects that you've talked about downtown, about maybe eliminating meters, or, you know, and of course, the armory and things like that. Is this something that we could scope across the seven or eight blocks of, of that downtown area and try to figure out? Because right now, I feel like, to, to some degree, we had a catastrophe down here on Union, and now we have this fencing up, and it's, let's just keep the fencing up. Is there a better spot that maybe we're not thinking of right now that is going to, you know, alleviate some of these issues?
You know, this is not a new idea, by any stretch of the imagination, I believe it was, you know, in the early two thousands, what's, you know, where it was being explored to close down all of Court Street, or turn Court Street into pedestrian plaza, or putting a, a Skyway parking ramp or complex on Congress, you know, a lot of things have been scoped out. My sense is, we've been living for a year and six months without the flow of traffic, one lane of traffic and one side of parking through this particular stretch of this area, in the uptown area, and it gives us the opportunity to explore a little bit and see what could, you know, could we create a, a different space, streetscape throughout the whole uptown area, if possible? You know, and if this works, you know, who's to say we couldn't start thinking, could we make this something similar up and down Court Street? So, to sit and go, well, let's go big picture and try and plan this out, I'll be quite honest, it'll probably never happen if that's the case. You know, this is an area that's behind a fence, we're talking about six parking spaces. I think, I believe, that with proper hardscaping in this area, it could be designed out to where during blackout fest or anything, that, that, that vehicles could pull onto the streetscape, to where we have planters that could be moved. You, you, you get creative with what you can do, a lot of cities across the nation do this all the time, and I think that this could be a pivot point for, again, you know, rethinking how we could do our small, yet urban design in planning things out on, you know, in the, in what is the heart of, of Athens, up and down Court Street and the latter is coming off of it. Council, you're already aware, so I might as well talk about this briefly, you know, because the, the topic came up about, you know, maintenance of the street, you know, if we can move forward with a special improvement district within this particular area, that's how you maintain it. You have the SID, which is essentially a district that is run, not, shouldn't say run, managed by the property owners throughout this region. There's, the, the, at the end of the day, with this particular section of street, from the curb side out, as it would extend out to the center line of what is that traffic, that's still the city's responsibility to maintain and take care of, and, and I would contend, as Mr. Gunn already brought up, which is a, a good, valid point, is that Ohio revised code, you know, binds your hands, you can't start serving alcohol unless you start building, you know, a containment, you know, a cord on off a whole area, that's not the intent of this design, that this design would be set up to where it was the people's space, and I'm saying all people, as you flow along through that particular section of, of West Union. But the SID, you know, would be one way in which you could create a job or jobs. I mentioned earlier tonight, visiting with David Scheffler, who is the executive director for Lancaster's SID, and I would encourage anyone in council to reach out to them as well, to find out how they do things. Through their SID, they're able to not only have snow removal in this area, but also gum removal during the summer months, they're also, within their SID, exploring street closures, closures on Broad, Broad Street in downtown Lancaster, and now they're talking about closing off to create a pedestrian mall. You know, I, I, I'm certainly sympathetic to businesses having parking spaces right out in front, but if we're going to drive, you know, our community, or strive as a community to become, you know, more environmentally conscious, you know, I'm a big advocate for, you know, parking space maximums, not parking space minimums, you know, to sit there and try to curb what traffic we do have in certain areas. We have a parking garage, you know, the parking garage, to me, you can park in our parking garage, and, you know, walk to a lot of the locations that we were talking about today to include the armory, and it would be no different than, than buying a carton of milk at, at Walmart or somewhere, and parking at the end of the parking lot and making that walk, and it's just, this would help create, I think, in the grand scheme of things, a healthier environment.
So the SID in Lancaster, did that happen before they began their streetscape and all the changes that went on? Was that driven by the SID to improve that district and do those kinds of things? There, there's a part in my thinking that it seems like having a special improvement district, identifying that, and then having those members come together to determine streetscapes, open areas, along with city administration, is, is a, rather than being opportunistic because we had a tragedy in terms of the fire for those owners, you know, it just seems to me that there has, I disagree, I think that planning can be a good thing. And we've had a bike and pedestrian plan, we've had other things, we have a comprehensive plan in the city, there's been a lot of that discussion, we know parking's an issue, we've got that. But if, if all the players who, who operate in the uptown area, you know, some who came here tonight could also be a part of that, it seems to me that that is a better way, my guess is Lancaster did some of that, in terms of their development of this idea and getting everybody on board with their streetscape. So I'm, you know, I don't know, my concern is just, well, it's there, people have adapted, as you, that's your word, and let's just try it and, and give it a go, and I think spending a lot of the city's resources is a concern for me.
I can tell you this, the city of Lancaster's SID generates sixty-nine thousand dollars a year, so it certainly wasn't what drove their regentrification of their downtown area, that was...
Was that part of the planning?
That was, pardon me?
They were part of the plan, was that part of the plan?
For their SID?
Well, I'm, I'm, it's maybe a structural kind of thing, in terms of how this began, how the process began, I imagine...
You mean for Lancaster versus...
Well, yeah.
One of the things, and I guess what we got from our city engineers, this is an opportunity, because the roadway being closed in order to get in, to do whatever infrastructure work we need to do to create this, it would be now, or shortly thereafter, out of the way of the businesses being, so that, that is one of the... way of the businesses being, so that is one of the driving forces.
Member Nysley?
I think, if I'm understanding what Councilmember Cossis was saying, it's back to that idea of a comprehensive plan and looking at the special improvement district and looking at our moving forward and update on our comprehensive plan. And so what are our opportunities? And then getting input, you know, from a variety of people in the uptown, the businesses, to hear what might be the best spot for that, so that there might be some other spot we might want to consider.
Councilmember? Thank you. No, I appreciate everyone's comments as well this evening. And disrespect to President Nysley, the comprehensive plan was also created a long time ago in today's era of everything happening super lightning quick with the internet and social media, et cetera, et cetera, and access to information. I still don't express my open-mindedness to the project. I do hear people's concerns, which I appreciate. I think parking is an issue for unloading and loading for venues, for shows. I think that an opportunity exists here for us to look at green space. And I also know that if we were to experiment with this process, it doesn't necessarily mean that we can't do it elsewhere. It's just this would be the starting point. So in my mind, it would be an opportunity for us to continue to look at other space as well. We all know government moves as slow as molasses sometimes, which is annoying and frustrating. In my mind, this would be an opportunity for us to jump it. It could be a starting point. Thank you.
I think one important thing is, we have to discuss green space. We're talking about probably planters with trees and those kinds of things. When I think of green space, I think of the College Green, which is very close to that. So that's why I say an enhanced pedestrian. When you look at the Asheville, I didn't see any green there. What I saw was, you know, eating areas, trees in pots and those kinds of things. So that's, it's just an expanded kind of enhanced pedestrian area, rather than, when I think green space, I'm thinking something else. And maybe the terminology, maybe I'm not, you know, up on my terminology. I don't know. But that's kind of, I think, when people think that, that's kind of where they're thinking. Perk-like.
Yeah, no, this is, this concept is hardscape.
It's hard.
It would be pavers. It would be, you know, an opportunity to put, you know, storm green, you know, stormwater under there too, which is being explored as well.
Right.
No, this would be something that's a malleable, whatever you want to call it. I call it a plaza, but it's whatever you want to talk about. But it's, we're talking about hardscape, putting pavers down as opposed to putting grass or anything. That wouldn't work. That, I think, would be the last way to go. But you could put planters and things like, you could put installation art down there.
Member Fall?
I'd like to point out that, just in this one area, that we've heard from people who are pro for the space, some people who have concerns about the space. And that will just be expanded all uptown whenever we start talking about a larger plan. I do, you know, we kind of, we're giving lemons, and we're trying to make lemonade out of the space and trying to kind of get out of the, just the car and uptown area. One thing that a lot of people talk to me about uptown is the pedestrian unfriendliness of the whole area. So this is an idea, we're trying to, because of the infrastructure questions, trying to grab it now. I think before, you know, we've been talking about doing a comprehensive plan update. I would, the comprehensive plan is very out of date. I think, however, that planning process is very long and unwieldy, and we, to say.
Yeah.
What we may want to do is do a smaller, looking at a set area, long-term, with looking at the fact that maybe the armory is going to be up and running in the next five years, and looking at that, doing with, in conjunction with the SID, of doing an uptown, like a charrette planning process. And I think that would, that would bring together a lot of these ideas that people are having, flesh out the problems that people see with this potential plaza space, whatever we want to call it. I don't want to, if we don't, if we don't do it, it's going to be harder to do if later we decide that we want to do it, if that makes sense. So, and just in that block, I've heard from a multitude of people. And if you had everybody raise their hand, you know, probably more people approach me about liking it than not liking it.
And I've had the opposite.
Right. So, but, I mean, we're, that's the, the power of planning is that you bring people together and you get to a good spot for everybody, which is something. So I think that with the SID, and we can start on this process, this shows that people have the energy and the passion to look at uptown area in a different way with the idea that we want to go beyond just the traditional cars and tiny little sidewalks sort of thing, and answering some of these questions, like the weird alcohol rules in Ohio. I never.
So, so one of the things that I'd like to propose is, you, Mayor, since I know this is, this has been a vision of yours, and you've talked about it, is, are you willing to put a, to look at a planning process? And how long does it take to put a SID in place as well?
Well, it's taken me four months so far. And it's likely to take another six months to get things going. And then it'll come before council, and there's going to be some approval process on council's part to kind of ratify what the business, or what the property owners have agreed to with this whole process. So, but I, I need to stress this with council. When we're talking a special improvement district, we're not talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that come in for, you know, unless you want to reach out to the property owners and say, you're going to be paying $45, $50 per linear foot. It's much like Lancaster, it's, these are for designated area beautification, for lack of a better way to put it, because that's basically what's going on. On the city's side is thinking how we're going to improve these areas to enhance them from an infrastructure standpoint as well as a sidewalk standpoint. You know, we can certainly go down that route, and it's one way to do things. You know, and so I've heard the same thing, just to throw this out there, that, you know, could this, this is unfairly enhancing somebody's property, business, whatever. But that's part of city administration's role. As a city, we want to encourage and grow people and make things better. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing things like improving, making new trails in the Southside Park someday, because that could enhance Southside's neighborhood, and therefore, that's not right. You know, it's just, we got to, we do need to think this through. And I think that this is a golden opportunity, I really do, to sit there and revision things and think things a little bit different. And that makes people uncomfortable. Now, I get that, you know, but, you know, we have to start somewhere. You know, the process can take us years and years and years, or we can, you know, start planning forward, pull the bandage off fast and go, okay, this is, this is working.
So can we pull the bandage off fastly with a working group, with a planner, with people who can sit down, and it's just not totally driven by the administration?
I think so. No, I know so.
So I would like to see that happen before council has to make a final decision on funding or whatever happens. I think, and if that could be done in two months, so be it. I'd be happy with that. But I really do think there needs to be, you know, a sit-down meeting where, as Member Fall mentioned, where these different elements are brought together, and loading and unloading in a particular area is discussed, and, you know, what might work in another part of the city. I mean, if that can be done and people meet once a week for eight weeks or whatever it takes, I'm, I would like, I think that's better for council, in my opinion, in terms of making a decision like that.
I'm fine with that. I think that's wise. I think that's a good way to go. You know, I, you know, this hasn't been going on in a vacuum. It's just looking at what is it, what's existing out there and knowing, you know, in my heart of hearts, once those construction fences go down and we go back to what we were, you know, six, you know, a year and six months ago, then it's just, it's gone.
Well, and maybe if some of these other ideas and folks, there's a lot of big thinkers here, you know, and a lot of very practical, pragmatic thinkers here as well.
Sure.
And I think it's important to have those people at the table discussing, you know, what, what needs, what would be good. And I'm not a business owner. I don't live in the downtown area day in and day out as some of these business owners. And I think we have to listen to what they have to say. So that's what I'd like to propose at this point, is that this working group come together. And we can talk about how that's organized later, but.
Sure.
And hopefully, some of our business people out here this evening will want to be a part of that.
I would caution that it needs to be, have a fairly narrow scope. It's, you know, because I can just see the working group getting together, and all of a sudden, you have, you know, 15 blocks looking at, and then the opportunity will be gone. So there's two, there's two scales here. You have this particular project. How does it, how does it work for the most people, for the most benefit, you know, sort of thing? And then a larger scale of looking the uptown, how does SID come into it? SID's not going to do it all. And it's not just the business people, you know, it's a community space up there. And I think that we can wait until our comprehensive plan process is going, but that's going to take a whole long time. And maybe what we need to do is that next scale of starting to look at having an uptown business district plan that's put together in the next year. That's separate than looking at what's going on Union. So that's two things. And it's going to be essential to any sort of success for either project to have at scale and to identify the focus, just from experience.
A resident planner just spoke. I think we're going to move on to the next topic for the evening.
It'd be great.
Thank you. Angel Street paving and repairs. You don't want to talk about paving? I, Paula, Service Safety Director, I'm going to let you go forward on this. I don't really have anything.
We're just taking the appropriation and authorization, up to $350,000. On the street infrastructure tour, there were some, and we still have that. Andy's still working on finalizing. We want to get the reading started through so that we can do that and put it out to bid, get that done.
For our new council members, this usually comes up early spring. We go through, Andy has identified some of the streets that he wants to pave. We have heard that in our report and on our infrastructure tour. And that's generally about the amount we spend each year, give or take.
It's a little higher. We have the Franklin overlay after CDVG we're throwing into that, the stretch of.
Yeah, Grand Park, there's going to be that rapid water line replacement down there. That's strategic on Andy Stone's part as well. Every time he's sitting there thinking about doing a repaving, might as well replace aging infrastructure underneath it so you're not chewing things up twice. So Grand Park, Townsend, not doing Avon, but doing Euclid, there's a number of streets. And then there's others, Lower Cable Lane and.
Clark.
Clark, yeah. So this, and this is.
And I know, you know, we hear a lot from our residents about potholed streets, and when they hear about projects like on Union Street, people get concerned. And we do have a regular schedule. Andy has the streets numbered or, or there's a gradation system or whatever, so that, that we know how bad the systems are. And so he tends to be pretty good at finding the streets that need the most work and, and so.
He uses a condition rating. But most of these streets are threes. Threes are poor. And the higher the number is, the better it is, a brand-new street. Brand-new repaved street is a 10, I believe, or nine.
Okay. So we'll bring that forward on Monday.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the road salt. We last year got into the purchasing, which was, worked out very well in terms of purchasing road salt, and we saved some money. So Andy would like to begin that endeavor again this year. And they do that with an ODOT summer contract for the winter. So we'd like to go ahead and do that again this year. It seems to be, they buy the salt in bulk, and it's not just each municipality buying their own.
It's through the co-op.
So it's through a co-op, so it seems to work well. We don't have a number on that yet because it's a bidding process. So the, we just are, we'll request next week that we go into the bidding process. Any questions on that? Okay. Sidewalk Assessment, Franklin Avenue. In hopes to get the information out to the residents as soon as possible, I begin that, I believe that process is beginning.
Sidewalk Assessment?
Yes, for sidewalk assessment on Franklin. Service Safety Director?
We forwarded to the Lot Director just a review of what the proposed ladder that actually comes out on code ladderhead to the property owners, basically informing them about the project. And this came from the endeavors that you requested, that we get out a little earlier in terms of saying, this is what will be occurring this summer and here under conditions.
Okay. So, remember, council, we spent quite a bit of time talking about that last summer after the round of sidewalk repairs. So this will be going out several months ahead of time. Do we, are you thinking July? Is that when we're thinking for repair? When is the project?
You know, this is accompanying the CDVG project out there, you know. I'm not 100% on when that's going to start rolling forward.
All right. So hopefully, this will give owners some leeway.
Yeah.
To know. McKinley Avenue Design Services. So this is the ordinance to move forward with the design?
Yeah, this is, you know, up to $200,000 on this. Also, hoping that we can work with Ohio University on cost share with the design engineering of this project.
I will just make this comment. Someone made this comment to me the other day, that it's $200,000 to design a street area, yet it's $500,000 for a pool. So they just thought that was rather strange, and I couldn't really answer that question, but.
I would contend that, yeah.
He uses a 10% rule. So he said about $2 million, 1.9 million for that. We'd like to have a little leeway there after the $200,000.
So that's a good answer. It's the 10% rule. Okay. Any miscellaneous? I don't have any. Any administration?
I have one.
Miscellaneous?
I should have said it during the City and Safety Services. But at the last Regional Planning Commission, we had Representative Chuck Hammer from the Public Health Department, and he was talking about mosquito control. I wanted to bring it up, that everybody needs to clean out their gutters, mosquitoes. There is this potential that we do have a tiger mosquito, which is the nasty mosquito that can breed everywhere and carries things like encephalitis and such, potentially. We have been mapped for the invasive species that carry Zika. So they, so people, and their favorite places to breed are gutters. So people need to clean out their gutters. And I would suggest or request that when the code enforcement officers go around and do their housing inspection, their rental inspection, that they look at the gutters. Because this could become a public health urgency, not an emergency, but it is definitely something that we need to get everybody to onboard. And clean out all the other things lying around in your gardens where things can breed. Sorry.
Member Nysley?
And a question about that chain, having that added to the rental checklist, checking the gutters, does that need any legislation or change in the code to add that to the checklist?
I'd have to look into it in terms of the housing quality standards and what you have.
I think we're supportive of it.
You can look at it as a public health.
Sure.
That doesn't help, Jeff. I don't, they don't do that, they don't spray DDT, so we don't need to have a freak-out about it, Jeff.
I think we're ready for transportation. Mayor?
I just want to thank you for bringing that forward. Just tangentially, during the Hutter's Household Race drop-off, there was 24 tires from the City of Athens that were dropped off. Now, that's not to say that they were just sitting in someone's backyard or in your front yard or whatever, but another place that tiger mosquitoes, as if they're not a heyday, multiple.
All right. Are we finished? Okay. It is 9:10 PM, and we stand adjourned for the evening. Thank you.